We'll open with the Pledge of Allegiance led by Board Member Buckles.
All right. Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
And it is my distinct honor to call Reverend Dan Phillips up for the invocation.
Ladies and gentlemen, it is very difficult sometimes to know exactly what to pray. I'm 69 years old. Most difficult problems I remember in school growing up, you better keep your shirttail in because Miss so-and-so will make you tuck it in. Senior class would have to get permission from the school board to go just a little bit extra further on a senior trip at the end of that year. But things have changed and they have changed tremendously. And I'm going to tell you right now, I'm taking the coward's way out with this one statement. I'm glad my daughter has already graduated from public high school because I would be terrified sometimes for her to go to school. Things are not like they used to and sometimes that meant they were getting better. Then they can get better if we want them to get better. If we choose to let God lead and God encourage and we give Him permission to do so. Let's pray. Father, we know that you are our heavenly Father. Father, we know that we do not have to give you permission to do anything in our lives. But Father, we yield to you because we know who you are. We know, Father, that through your Son and through your Holy Spirit, you can provide the peace that passes all understanding. And Father, we need that peace and we need that understanding. And we need to know, Father, that in this meeting today and every time this group meets, their heartbeat, their passion is just like those that sit in the audience. They care for the children in this county, whether they be in first grade or seniors that are in our public school system. They care for them to be able to get the very best education, to be able to receive that in the safest environment possible. For those children to know that they are challenged to learn and not hunker down in fear. For teachers to be able to know that they are to do all within their power to prepare our young people to meet the challenges of this life after the school bell rings. So Father, as this meeting is getting started, may we commit to you to honor these that have thrown their hat in the ring, committed their passions and their lives to this position as a school board member. To those, Father, throughout the entire school system, who are working diligently, lovingly, sacrificially, working to make this the best school environment we possibly can. And so, Father, we yield to you as the business of this meeting is conducted. In Jesus' name. Amen.
Thank you so much Reverend Phillips.
Grace.
This time I'd like to call up Coach Ron Whitehurst. He's going to recognize two of his students. One of his students.
The other one had to work and he was not able to hear, but we want to recognize him. Hunter Cole placed third in the state this year in weightlifting in the 199-pound class. He bench pressed 335 pounds and he clean and jerked 285 for 620 total, which got him third place.
That's wonderful.
And the young lady I've got up here today is Michaela Cody. She's a senior also. She is one of the, I call the quartet of four seniors we had that kind of led our team. A wonderful young lady who Interlochen High School's girl weightlifting has won four county championships, well, actually seven, but four with her on the team. Four county championships in a row, three district titles in a row, and two third-place finishes in the region. She is a two-time qualifier for the state. Last year she finished ninth and said she was coming back to medal and she did this year as she placed six in the state. Her bench press, best bench press this year, she might look small, but she's full of dynamite. She bench pressed 170 pounds and she clean and jerked 175 pounds. And if you don't know what that is, you bring it up to your chest and you put it over your head.
She's stronger than the sheriff.
You can lift the bar without any weights on it.
Her best total this year is 340, but a young lady that strived to do everything the right way. We had a lot of younger kids this year and she was able to push our team to be a great mentor and just always wanted to be the best and make the kids the best and said she wanted to leave a legacy for the kids to continue to be the county and their district champions that we've been in the past.
Well, Interlochen always tears us, tears it up in weightlifting every year. That's wonderful.
Yep, and she is one of the reasons why. She's been a wonderful asset to Interlochen High School.
And we'd like to get your picture. Congratulations, Michaela, for a job well done. Congratulations on graduating.
Rick, are you going to get in that picture with me?
Yeah, let me, run me up right there. She's a graduate.
Yes, that's a congrat- yeah, alumni. Thank you, Coach. Jane, can I give you a check? I can get to the picture. Next, we'll have Coach Jeremy Passmore from Palacka High School. He's going to recognize some of our track team members that participated in the state track tournament. I recognize a bunch of these boys.
I was going to say, I know, boys.
Jerime?
How y'all doing? I'm Jeremiah Passmore. This is Coach Jarvis Melton and Coach Kedrick Wright. We are the coaches for the Palacka High School track team. We're here to recognize three of our four young men that actually placed in the state finals. We have Jalen Sessions that actually placed, he actually made it to the finals in the 100 meters and ran a time, PR time, a personal record of a 10.8, which is extremely exceptional. He started at 11, I think he started at 11.5 and he cut all the way down to a 10.8 and he's only a junior, so we'll see him again next year, so that's going to be great. We also have Keishon Russell, who is also a member of the 4x1 team that actually got close to the school record this year, but they weren't able to actually get it. But again, he's returning as well. He's a junior and they'll be back on that 4x1 team. And then we have Trayvon Williams, who broke the school record in the 200 meter with the time of 21.48. And then he broke the school record in the 400 meter as well, which was a 47.5. And he was also a member of the 4x100 team as well. So these young men have done an exceptional job and the coaches as well, preparing them for this season. We started out a little bit late, but they took up the chain and they worked extremely hard and so, and the results were exceptional. And so, we look forward to the next season as well, as they all compete, as well as one of our members that weren't able to make it to here today, Elijah Sessions. And so, congratulations to all these young men.
Wonderful. Could you also introduce the gentleman against the wall in the back for those that may not know him?
Coach Jerome Wilkinson. He's very involved as far as the wanting to know what's going on with the team and he's a great administrator.
Yes, and he's always supported our sports programs.
He was a slow, he was known as the slowest baseball player to ever play.
But one of the best baseball coaches that was ever at Palacka High School.
He's also an assistant principal at Palacka High School.
Yes, AP at Palacka High School.
Yeah, he's the man.
Well, thank you very much, guys, and congratulations, and we look forward to seeing more wonderful things.
Let's get your picture.
Yeah, y'all come up and we'll get a picture.
Which one of them's Gilroy?
I was going to say that guy back there with the bald head.
Macaroni? I'm going to get you back. I'm not worried about you getting one.
Football players, any of them? Trayvon.
And Kedrick is a Palacka High School graduate as well.
Okay, it comes time in our agenda for public comments. I only have three. Our policy states that each of you will have three minutes to make your comment and we'll ask Wayne McLean to come up first, please. Sharon, can you watch the time for me?
You better watch him close because he's long-winded.
I know, but I never pay attention to it.
Thank you, Ms. Chairman. I'll be quick and to the point and try to be as clear as possible. I'm here to talk about school safety referred to as the Guardian program. I am Wayne McLean, 285 West River Road, Palacka, Florida, speaking on behalf of myself. I just want to state to the school board members, first of all, thank you for your service to our community, it's very much appreciated. Second of all, I have unequivocal support for Rick Cerency and the Guardian program along with the sheriff. I thought it was a well-thought-out plan and I would ask the school board member to definitely consider adopting it. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Wayne. Oh, I don't guess we have to clap.
No, 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 no. Let's not start that. Clapping and booing.
I didn't roll my eyes.
And I didn't accuse you of that. Sheriff Gator Delage?
So what you do is push this and then it's going to beep. Don't do it. It's going to beep when I push it. No.
Madam Chair, members of the board and those in attendance here tonight, a decision made by the legislature earlier this year in the aftermath of the Parkland shooting was a hard pill for sheriff's offices, school districts, and county commissions across the state to swallow. While the heart of the matter, protecting our children, was the primary goal, the means to fund such an undertaking was woefully incomplete. Some counties were able to handle hiring additional law enforcement officers without having to weigh any consequences of losing instructional staff. Those communities have an influx of funding with much larger populations. Quite simply, those types of budgets are not within our grasp. All of the governmental entities represented in this room are fiscally constrained and hard decisions to find any school safety program has consequences. A decision has to be made and I certainly do not envy your position. Our unified mission remains to protect the children, faculty, and staff at our area schools. In the past, the sheriff's office has funded about 30% of youth resource deputies, as you're all aware. This year, following the mandates by the legislature to increase protection in our schools, the cost to add three additional youth resource deputies and one supervisor will increase the school youth resource deputy program's budget to over $1.2 million. Helping to offset the cost to the school district and by working closely with the Board of County Commissioners, I am prepared to contribute 42% to the youth resource program, a 12% increase in the sheriff's office and county contributions over last year, representing $541,800 in a much higher school resource budget. And I think it's worth mentioning that an average eight-hour day, five-day-a-week employee that works for the sheriff's office can work up to 260 days in a year. That number does not include vacation or sick time. A youth resource deputy works in a school for 180 days, leaving only 80 days, or about 30% of an average school year. During this time, youth resource deputies participate in summer programs that benefit our children, complete yearly mandatory training for their duties in the schools, and maintain their law enforcement certification, another requirement to remain as a youth resource deputy here in Putnam County and any county throughout the state. It's important to remember that this current proposal does not reflect hiring youth resource deputies to place in every public school. These costs would be much higher. As sheriff, I remain committed to the safety of our schools and to provide a warm environment conducive to learning for our children. Thank you.
Thank you, Sheriff.
I have a question.
Okay.
May it be appropriate?
I'm giving you permission to ask it.
Thank you. Why are we training, I don't know who to ask, but the sheriff has given us a nice deal with him footing the 42%. And the plan from the beginning, you know, the plan is to accept the contract that the sheriff's office has offered, and that would leave seven uncovered schools without SROs, correct? Seven or eight?
Seven.
Then why are we training 25 to 30 people?
Madam Chair, if you'd like, I'll advertise.
I would love you to. Yeah, because that was part of the recommendation that the task force made that...
I was in the process of making notes as well, that if you had an all officer respond, such as a shooting at a bank near the, say, Palacka High School and your resource officer responded, you're going to have to have more people trained to cover in the event, to comply with Florida law. You've got to have people on campus. That's, that's the way I think, but I mean, that's...
What do we do now? We have resource officers. What happens?
We don't have them, but we don't have, we don't have a Florida law that says they can't leave school with office. I mean, they can't leave their school safe.
That's what I'm waiting for the DOE to tell us. What about when SROs have to go? Do we have to have employees that are going to walk around with guns all the time in case there's a bank robbery that the SRO has to go to and they have to shoot up somebody?
Let Gator...
To your, to your point, Mrs. Jorgensen, we're training approximately 25 to 30 guardians right now. While some of those are school district employees, you also have to take into consideration that each of the charter schools throughout the county adopted the program and there are members of the charter schools that are going through the program as well.
They opted for guards.
Right. How many, more than one in each?
I don't have that breakdown with me right now.
Okay.
Does that answer your question?
Well, I'm not satisfied. I mean, why? David, can you answer it? You're looking at me like I'm crazy. Why are we...
You're assuming I'm looking at you like I'm looking at Charlie. Anyway, I have, I don't know why they're training as many, but I do know that if it comes to the point that, that the board adopts, one of the programs, particularly the ones with the off-duty folks that there's a job description for today, there will be times like scheduling substitutes that they can't show and sometimes our schools quite often wind up covering those classes with non-instructional people at the school and they don't have anybody to cover. I think Florida law is going to be a work in progress, like you said. I don't think they really know. I believe personally the governor will come up with more money, surprisingly, right before his election to do this. Well, I mean, let's be honest, there's a lot of that, but I think there'll be some more money coming. I'm just feel it, just for the lack of a better...
Gator, it was my understanding that when we first started talking about the Guardian plan, we talked about putting them just in the elementary schools. But then, after the task force met, we talked about an additional as needed. Is that how it was worded? Remember we...
There was some, some at least anecdotal discussion about only placement of guardians in elementary schools. That was something that, if you can recall, we had asked the board to meet with an executive session to discuss.
Okay.
My only concern in that is, like I said, you know, if somebody wants to perpetrate a problem, they could have someone run a car into a building or something near the school and do something stupid and, you know, if it can happen, it will happen. You know, something's going to happen someday at some point, somewhere, you know?
Yes, we've been very fortunate.
And we have been very fortunate here, but you've, I, I'm kind of like Kathy. There's going to be a point where even if you have guardians, they're going to be on a field trip or somewhere like that, you know, you're going to, it's going to be interesting how we can ultimately comply with Florida law and make sure somebody's on campus all the time with a weapon, but it's something we're going to have to work through.
And if I, if I may address that as well, Ms. Crawford. So what the plan that we currently proposed was to hire the additional three youth resource deputies that would cover as floaters, if you will, in the event that a guardian was absent from a school campus so that we would still comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 7026.
And the 10 elementary schools would have guardians and the two extra deputies would kind of float and fill in and supervise?
That's correct. Or if we had perhaps a youth resource deputy who was absent from a school that day, they would fill in in their stead as well.
Could a supervisor, if it was an emergency, fill in?
Certainly. And I'll make a commitment to you now that moving forward from here, we don't leave schools open without youth resource deputies that have them assigned there now. We oftentimes post overtime and sometimes we actually mandate employees to come in and cover those vacancies whenever someone calls in sick or, or has something that's unavoidable that they can't attend work.
Explain, just for the sake of those that may not know the specifics of the Guardian program, because people are envisioning the teachers packing and so forth. So just talk us through that. And I mean, not the board, we've been over and over it, but some...
Well, I don't, I don't want to monopolize any of, any of the rest of the time of the meeting. I know there's some other public comments here, but just to be very clear for the, the public that's here to understand the, we could talk for hours about Senate Bill 7026, but one of the, the key components in there was that this bill was never designed or intended to arm classroom teachers. And in accordance with the law, the plan that we have developed at the sheriff's office in cooperation with Superintendent Cerency and Travis Weaver from, from his staff precludes us from, from arming classroom teachers with guns.
Any other questions for Gator before, the sheriff, before he sits down?
Okay, thank you.
Thank you so much. Mr. Flag?
Push the start button. Wait, tell you how this went.
I never heard a beep.
Well, he didn't get to turn it off before.
Good afternoon, Madam Chair, school board members, superintendent, board attorney, and to all that are here. It took a lot of meditation for me to decide to come and speak to you today, but I've had enough of the lack of civility among our board members. The public perception and perspective is, is that you guys don't know how to get along. You have more personality conflict than policy conflict. And we're tired of the dissension among board members for Putnam County School District. I really believe that you all could move, not only this particular issue that you're dealing with, with whatever you decide to do, but a lot of other issues, you can really move forward for the benefit of this district. But all of the stuff that we're witnessing among you all is very troubling and I am an observer of it. And I just think that at this particular point in time, you guys need to teach, be taught how to legislate for this school district. You've gone to professional development, we've heard about you having workshops, but when will you apply it? I'm not representing anyone but Carl Flag, a concerned citizen. It is absolutely unacceptable, your conduct in these meetings, it's unacceptable. We're not going to continue to sit back and watch the board have panic attacks in these meetings. It's absolutely unacceptable. And I know you're looking at me as if, what are you talking about? Ask any citizen in this county to tell you all what our perception is of how you all are running these meetings. It's unacceptable. Conflict is and can be healthy, but controversy is destructive and divisive. We see a divided board. We really see a divided board. And, okay, at the end of the day, you're going to disagree with me and it's perfectly fine, but again, we, the citizens, are seeing a total different side than what you all are seeing, sitting up here, meeting after meeting. We want you to make decisions. We don't want you to make decisions just to make them, but we want you to make decisions that are going to get us in a place of comfort. Right now, your teachers, your administrators, your parents, your students, and the citizens of this county, we're not at ease. We're not at ease because we have a school board that is not making decisions that we feel that you've had time enough to make. And again, you may disagree and you certainly, you're welcome to do so. I have great expectations for each of you all. I hope and pray that you don't take this personal because this is a professional commentary that I'm making. And you know what? On any team, if one person on the team causes us to have less scores, a lower score, all lose. Thank you for my time.
Your time is up.
Yes, ma'am, it's perfectly fine.
Okay, it's time now on our agenda for the consent agenda. I'll start with Ms. Gilroy. Do you have anything you'd like to pull?
No, ma'am, my questions we answered. Thank you.
No, ma'am.
Ms. Cummings?
Just for a little more discussion on H5, we did have a meeting, but I wanted to talk about that a little more.
I have nothing to pull.
I have nothing to pull and I'll make a motion that we approve the consent agenda with the exception of item H5.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion passes.
That's Jonathan, isn't it?
Yeah, and I do appreciate the ability to have the school improvement plan presented ahead of time in a workshop concerning Mosley. So it's more, I think this is more for discussion for the public because it is such a monumentous decision to help Mosley in the future. But I didn't know and I did not completely ask in the board meeting about, at this point, the external operator contract would be in the case of Mosley not being a C or higher, that we would hire LSI to be a external operator at the charge of 190, well, almost 200,000. And that would be to basically run the school. So I've, we've never done this before in our district, so I guess we had a couple of questions and it was something that I felt like the public would need to be aware of. I didn't know if we had planned any type, if it does happen, will we have a community meeting to maybe explain to the parents? Is there any ability to have open enrollment, which I do, I know we transfer, but if, if these parents and the community aren't comfortable with their children being part of this, you know, I guess it's just something we've never done, so...
I would envision, Jonathan, correct me if I'm wrong, I would envision some type of maybe parent meeting.
Parent night, yeah.
Yeah, parent night or something where we can explain the options. Jonathan, you want to address that as well?
And I guess the one thing, I still, it was a fee, like a monthly fee, and of course, if we're out of, once we become a greater, a score greater than C, it'll automatically, so next year around this time, we may be saying, hey, we're going to terminate the comp, the contract if in fact this does happen.
So a couple of things. First of all, to the first question, absolutely, we can, we can schedule, I think we've been very transparent with the staff there all year long at many different junctures of decisions being made. But we can certainly schedule meetings with parents. I do, and I can say that one of the reasons why the community assessment team chose this option out of their limited options were because it would have the most consistency at the school.
Okay.
We are, you know, as far as the student experience and the parent experience, it's not, it shouldn't be that much different. Sarah Jean has done a really nice job of retaining staff. She has a very committed staff that is committed to the students and the parents and that community. In the past years, Mosley's seen a lot of turnover, but so far this year, they've seen very little. They only have a couple of teachers that have transferred out. As far as the student experience, one of the reasons why we pursued discussions with LSI was to keep the implementation consistent so that teachers, what they've learned this year, they can build upon next year and they're not being told something totally different with a different company. The students, as far as their experience goes, teachers continue to improve the amount of student conversation and the amount of student engagement and the collaboration in the classroom. And so, students there, I feel, are very happy, as evidenced by diminished referrals, diminished suspensions. So that would be the piece about that. Regarding the contract, the, we did talk about it during the board workshop. Section 3.2 of the EO contract has the termination clause. So as soon as school grades come out this summer, on the day of those school grades being released, either the EO contract commences or the EO contract is terminated.
Okay.
And no matter what, that Schools for Rigor piece that you've already approved in the past in February is still there. In the future, if you go to section 16... In the future, if you go to Section 16, Section 16.1, Ms. Cummings, your comment about when we transition from an EO to not EO. The goal of the contract is to transform the school into a sustainable, scalable model school of rigorous teaching and learning. Given that section of Florida statute does not require schools to maintain the EO option once they attain a C or higher, the contract will automatically revert to a standard Schools for Rigor model as applicable once the school achieves a school grade of C. So at this point next year, when school grades are released, if we have to implement EO, the EO contract would either continue for up to two years if the school does not get a C, or once the school gets a C, if it does not this year, then we would revert to a standard Schools for Rigor contract. At the end of that, we do have the option to dissolve the contract partnership at the end of a fiscal year mutually.
I guess my question to you is if the community assessment team feels that we've tried it, we've done the EO, and things are still not, what are the options, if you could refresh my memory, like, that were given to the community assessment team?
So last fall, because of the changes in House Bill 7069, the option for district managed turnaround at Mosley is no longer an option. And so the three options the community assessment team talked about and discussed were closing the school and reassigning the students to other schools in the district. The second option is turning it over to a charter company. And the third option is either an external operator or creating a district managed turnaround. The external operator is the only option that allows the employees and staff to be district employees.
Okay. And at that point, next year, if we're in the same situation, is that something the board will have to decide which one of those options, or is that something the community assessment team has, is charged with? Is that a board-approved committee? I guess I'm...
So the community assessment team is not board-approved. It is a committee that was created in collaboration with the principal. It involved parents, teachers, leaders, district staff. Chair Crawford was on that as well, representing kind of school board in that community. The turnaround option plan that is submitted as an EO option is for two years. So this conversation would not be happening next summer.
Okay.
Because it is a two-year plan.
I understand. Okay. And then at the end of two years, I guess I was trying, does the school board vote one of those three options, or the community assessment team make a recommendation? I guess, how did we get to the point of saying we want an EO? I can't, I know we voted on it, but was it just a committee that made a recommendation, and then the school board approved this as an option?
We spent quite a bit of time discussing the three options and trying to come up with the one that we felt was best for the students and the community.
Right. Okay.
Yes.
And then you bring, so basically, you bring your recommendation back to the board. Okay. And it is a two-year commitment at this point, that decision for an EO, external operator, is a two-year decision unless it's a C or above?
Correct. Your turnaround option plan is for two years at a time.
Okay.
And we've written in clauses that, I mean, the whole purpose of an EO is not to maintain authority over the school.
Right.
They actually want to give it back as quickly as possible.
Okay. I just was trying to understand the logistics of how, you know, it came, and then the community assessment team, and then the external operator. It was just when we're gonna have to face this decision again, so we're not...
Two years.
Okay. All right. Two years, and hopefully, we won't even need this.
We will not need two years.
Yeah, I hope so. Okay, I make a motion to approve Item H5.
I second.
All in favor? Aye. Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll move on to the emergency items. We'll go out of regular session into emergency session. We have four items that...
Madam Chair, can I just interject? You have five. Number five is actually not printed for you, but it is on board docs due to the length of the document.
The one we got at the meeting today, the contract?
Yeah, the contract we saw.
Okay.
It's the union.
Yeah, the union.
Number five.
Oh, we have.
Oh, the emergency item, number...
Emergency item, number five, right.
Okay, okay. Well, only see, oh, I see, I see what you're saying.
Agreement with the...
So I need to add...
Federation of Teachers.
Contract?
Yeah, do you know, let me make sure you have...
Well, I'm just reading off my agenda.
Okay.
Here it is. Okay.
Okay, you got it?
Yeah.
Agreement with PFT.
Yeah, I see it now. Okay. Item one, additional work hours through June 2018 for a bus driver to assist the route coordinator. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Chairman, I make a motion we approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number two, additional work hours through June 2018 for a bus driver to train drivers for testing. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I make a motion that we approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number three, school food service department to fund bus drivers in attendance for our summer reading program. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
Feeding, not reading.
Oh, well, y'all know I'm an English teacher, feeding. Feeding program.
I make a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Number four, additional work hours for a bus driver to assist in the parts department. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
I make a motion, we approve.
Second.
All in favor? Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. And then number five, the 2017 through 2020 tentative agreement with the Putnam Federation of Teachers United. Justification, explanation, time sensitive.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. We'll go out of emergency session, back into regular session. Unfinished business, Item L on the agenda, remove from the table the selection of safe school allocation option per Senate Bill 7026.
Did I put that on the table, and do I need to remove it?
Remember, I missed that meeting.
You would move to remove it from the table. If it were seconded and approved by the majority, then it would be debated on in L2.
Okay, Eric.
So we don't need to make a motion then to...
You will need me to make a motion. Madam Chairman, I would, I so move to remove from the table the selection of safe school allocation option per SB 7026.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Motion carries. Item two...
Madam Chair, before, I'm sorry.
Oh, yeah, you wanted to make a statement.
Yeah, I was gonna read a statement before you go to discussion input action on that next item, if that's okay with you.
Sure.
Board members, before you make a decision whether to consider one of the three safe school, school safety options, there are some important items to consider. First of all, the Blackadder News recently conducted a poll, well over 200 respondents that showed 80% were in support of the Guardian program over the other two options. The director of school security offered board members the opportunity to screen the list of potential Guardian members in executive session. However, the board declined. Since our last board meeting, a number of potential Guardian members contacted my office to express their concerns, and I would like to share with the board a few of the quotes from this group of educators. One principal said, "If there was ever an active shooter, having the Guardian program gives me a chance to stop the shooter and save lives. Regardless if I have a gun or not, I believe if I can take some of the action away from my students, then I have a chance to save lives. For me, it is worth taking the bullet to save one of my students. I'm also a parent. I believe in being able to carry a concealed weapon gives me the greatest chance to come home to my family." Another principal stated, "As a military veteran, I fully support the implementation of the Guardian program to provide safety for the students, faculty, staff, and families who are on our campus every day. This program will be a success and comes at no cost, which also prevents the loss of jobs for my peers who work so hard at our schools." A dean of students says, "I'm not a classroom teacher and will likely be engaging an active shooter on campus regardless of whether or not I am armed, but if I was a member of the Guardian program, I feel I would be able to save our students and faculty members from harm." An elementary, non-instructional employee says, "No one is being made to accept this responsibility. No one is being forced to carry a weapon on campus. These individuals are selected by the same persons you trust every day to lead our schools." Another principal goes on to say, "As a Putnam County School District employee, I would like to participate in the Guardian program because school employees are the first line of defense for our student safety." An assistant principal says, "Our commitment is always to our children. Each and every administrator I know will sacrifice their personal safety for the safety of the students and their school. We do this because we love and care for each child as if they are our own. Arming highly qualified, educated, well-trained, mentally stable school personnel ensures rapid response to a situation which saves lives." And finally, one of our principals goes on to say, "There is a difference in having a hired hand go to save lives than someone who is a parental figure. I would rather have my dad come and save me if I am in trouble than a hired hand. I know my dad will keep coming until he is unable or the air leaves his body. A hired hand will never love these kids like I do. As board members, you've heard clearly from the public and the business community and from other law enforcement agencies, and now from the employees who are willing to sacrifice their lives, their safety for the lives of our children. You have had the opportunity to consider other options through numerous workshops. The citizens of Putnam County have a clear expectation for this board to make a timely decision to ensure the safety of our students and not have a negative financial impact on our instructional programs. The sheriff's office has already indicated that the deadline to hire and train additional SROs passed over a month ago. Any further indecision by this board will be a decision made to put our schools in an unsafe position on the first day of school on August 14th. As a matter of fact, today is the last day that we can approve the school resource officer contract due to sheriff budgetary constraints. I highly recommend that you approve the May 1 recommendation from the school security task force to hire four additional school resource officers and authorize the school Guardian program for all schools in our district. Thank you very much."
Thank you, Superintendent.
Could I ask a quick question? We, I reached out...
Before we make the motion to take it off the table?
He...
We did that?
Already done it.
Okay.
Did, were you able to speak with the Escambia superintendent?
Yes.
Could you make a report and a summary of what he, because he told me he would, you know, and give me some paperwork, and I didn't get that. He said he'd give that to you?
Yeah, and I left it in the office for you. Left it in the, with...
Oh, okay. But could you give us a quick summary? Because he had, he's already done something for two months, and he was really excited about the success he's had.
Yeah, I did talk to the superintendent from Escambia County, who Ms. Cummings actually reached out to, and he called me. And they, they have implemented the off-duty police officer program, and they pay them $30 an hour, and, and they have a person that schedules these people, and they have 31 elementary schools that they have to cover. And I asked the question, "Superintendent, what happens if you cannot cover these schools? If a person's out?" He says, "The school's not covered." So, you know, and that's something we've heard from, from our other agencies, is just...
That's my point.
The ability to cover schools on a consistent basis, because these people are, you're not gonna get, none of the agencies are gonna sign a contract, so you're strictly going by people who are willing to work extra time. So he did say, I mean, that's the basis of their program, and he did say that schools were gonna be left uncovered if they could not find somebody. So that was the gist of it.
I guess I was just curious if he gave you any of the protocol, because he's done it for two months. So has he kind of given you a number of how many times it wasn't covered, or...
He didn't give me that number.
Okay. I didn't even think to ask him. I just was curious, because he had a, I just appreciated his ability to have something that's already been done. And he was very, very, very excited about it, and he's covering 31 schools when we were just looking at 10 schools. So there was a supervisor with the FHP that had a actual coordinator, and that's their job, and they would schedule. That would be a company that we could call, and that would be something we could look into through that company. And I just wanted to make sure that we had that option. But the, the email was a contract per se, which I wanted Charlie to look at it, but I'm sorry I didn't...
I did set it aside for you, because...
Okay. I'm sorry, I didn't grab it from Sharon today, but it was a job description of what these people would be expected to do when they come on campus, and also a type of contract, which I wanted Charlie to review and see how that would kind of play out if we were just to do something like that, because that would be something, again, that they would have their own cards, and they would have everything. That would be something that would be able to do. Again, he does 31 schools. We need 10. I feel confident that we would, would be able to entertain that idea. As far as hiring, there's two different companies that do that, and I don't know if we could have them come speak or make a proposal if we decided to hire a person to be a scheduler for that type of law enforcement officer, but...
And I did ask Ms. Odom if, at whatever point, you're interested to crunch those numbers for you, and just in case you're interested in what that option would cost.
Yeah, $30 an hour. And I think that would be something that we would have to ask Ms. Odom if the board wanted her to look into it further, to talk to her, to the Escambia CFO, and how they actually do that payment plan and, and work that out, because they're already doing it.
Madam Chairman, can I make a statement when she's through?
They just pay up their accounts payable $30 an hour.
Okay.
So I've got all the numbers if you're interested.
Okay. Oh, you do have them. Awesome. Perfect. Yeah, I would like to...
I'm gonna have to ask the audience to please be quiet so everyone on the desk can hear. Mr. Buckles would like to make a statement?
I think you guys know where I stand and how I feel. I do, I do feel it's imperative to make a decision. But my, my concern is, at, at $30 an hour, or whatever we pay these folks, if they're gonna go stand as a, as an off-duty officer in an elementary school, or wherever you send them, that they might, we might look at them maybe tutoring kids as well, because it, you go somewhere like Mosley, and, and, you know, there's always a room for pullouts. I, I just don't see, I don't see an armed guard in, at Melon School or Melrose just being on full alert continually. I mean, they're listening and looking during peak times, but I just, that's one thing we didn't put in the job description the other day, and I don't want to just monopolize this and go ahead and make a motion for the sake of Robert's rules of order and, and make another proposal to do the same thing that I did earlier. I'm gonna let you guys do what you're gonna do, but I will say, my concern beyond not being able to cover with off-duty officers, like substitute teachers, you can't always find the one you want. And the one you want that interacts the best with your staff and loves your kids may not be available, and it's, it can be a very, not, not the best fit in the world. But my concern is for the people that are out there that want to go home at night and see their children and see their families, and they're gonna go, they're gonna run to the sound of gunfire like Sandy Gilliard would have done at Price Middle School or any other school, and like the teacher did last week, that took three bullets and, and fortunately lived. These folks are gonna do that. I feel like they deserve a fighting chance to continue to live their life without us being pushed by whoever's pushing. I did get one phone call after Nikki put it in the paper, but I haven't heard from the masses that are not in favor of us, other than, other than there is, we, we just need to comply with Florida law and move on. This thing's gonna change. Even if we go with Guardians, or you go with something else, it's going to change. The governor's catching enough grief. He's liable to come up with more money to hire SROs, and then you've...
When, why, why are we in a hurry to make a difference?
To comply with Florida law and have a timeline. So that's why...
There's no deadline on when we have to do this.
Let him finish.
I'm sorry.
I think we need to make a decision and move forward. I may not vote for it, but I think it, because of training and timelines, it needs to be, it needs to move, and, and this will tweak. But I hope you guys, in your, in your mind, just say a little prayer for the folks that are going to the kids if they get in a situation like that, and think about it. That's all I'm gonna say.
Ms. Gilliard, did you want to say something?
Just quick, just based on what we've done here today, given the superintendent permission to take care of the... to take care of the ten-month employees so that they're covered. We have that working force now. We, they're already being trained with our sheriff. Uh, if Nikki wants to bring the other person in to hear, uh, let's, let's do it, but in, in the meantime, we are trying to, to move forward. And another thing, we, that perception of the teachers being armed with, you know, I just keep this in back of my mind, and that's not the case. These, from what I'm hearing from the sheriff, these are going to be people that are gonna have the training, and in my mind, it's better to have it and not need it than to need it and we not have these people in place. And we're looking at our elementary schools as far as our, our main focus for the Guardian, because our high schools and middle schools will have the, um, resource officer.
Well, the recommendation was in all of our schools.
Okay, but we will have those people, but they won't necessarily need to-
So what? Well, that was what I was trying to make clear earlier. When we first started talking about it, it was just in elementary schools, but the task force, um, recommended that trained as needed for all of our schools.
But they will be trained, but the resource officer would be the first line of-
In the schools that they're in. But they're not gonna be in every school.
But remember, the caveat of escalating to where the budgetary, the, the budget of this, remember, don't forget that part of the task force. I think it keeps getting, um, left off when I had, don't have that written, but-
What part?
Option seven with the caveat of elevating it to where the school board feels comfortably financially funding it. I, Sharon can read it, but don't forget that part. This, the task force said, "This is all financially we can do." And that's why I keep saying, "No, we can do more. There's nothing that says that we can't, and we have the ability, and we, our kids deserve a person at every school." There's no doubt in my mind that we should not have a volunteer position at some schools. We have the ability. There's another quote that, uh, I mean, off-duty officers is completely a off-opportunity. School safety officers is completely financially a possibility. We just made a two-hundred-thousand-dollar budget to, um, fund, out of the general fund for Mosley. Don't tell me we cannot do it. We are very close. Um, in fact, I just got a quote from another security company that would offer for all of our eighteen schools, six-hundred-and-sixty-five-thousand dollars. He would love to do a presentation, "Law enforcement officers in the law." There are options.
Thank you Augustine.
There's two of them, yeah.
I spoke to one that, and also the insurance is on them.
Yeah, so please, there's no discussion from this, from the-
Somebody make a motion.
So if you want, and we haven't even tried to, our job title, the ju, school safety officer, we can, would you be willing to at least try to hire some people? Would you be opposed to that?
Are you talking to Sandy or me?
I'm talking to both of you guys.
Uh, I'm, I'm willing-
We have been giving it a fair effort to try.
I'm willing to, to help put those that wanna protect themselves to protect themselves.
No comment from the-
I am also willing to, to try not, to, to try to do it in the most economical fashion. I, I, I'm just one vote, guys. I mean, you guys gonna have to move on and we, we, we need to-
And the city managers are both out of town and they will have a proposal, both of them have said. And they are out of town and they will re-address the issue. There's two proposals out there from city police to cover some of the police, I mean, some of the schools in the city of Crescent City and Palaca.
Madam Chair, could I-
So there is, yes, there is very definitely something. I don't know if you've talked to them personally, because they're both out of town, but I did speak to them.
Madam Chair, can I just make one comment?
Yes Superintendent.
I wanna make, I wanna be very clear.
The audience needs to be quiet, please.
I wanna be very clear. I gave you a distinct recommendation about supporting the recommendation from the task force, and it is very clear this community is expecting something to happen right away. This can has been kicked down the road too long. It is time to make a decision. We have, we have people being trained now. We, that is no cost to the district. We need to approve the school resource officer contract, because right now, they have to submit a budget as well. We're, we have had too many opportunities to discuss and debate. It is time to make a decision now, and I would ask somebody on this board to make a motion to move forward.
Madam Chair-
Wait, I have a statement I'd like to make.
I'll make a motion, nobody else will.
I have a statement before any motions are made. Ms. Jorgensen?
You know, you may have had many, 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 many hours discussing this Superintendent, but we haven't. We have not. We own, we obeyed the suchine law. Imagine that. We don't talk to each other about issues we're gonna vote on except at public meetings. So you can count your ninety-four days and then count how many hours we, the five of us, now mind the superintendent or the sheriff or anybody else, the five of us, and call, you can knock us all you want, not for the parliamentary, but this county is lucky to have involved, caring board members that just don't rubber stamp everything the good old boys want. That's what this comes down to. What, shh, without all the information, I will not. I don't have all the information. I can't.
All right, Madam Chair.
I, I'm making a statement first, Mr. Buckles.
Because they just opened the sat, excuse-
Point of order, Ms. Jorgensen is addressing someone in the audience. This is not someone, uh-
Well, he addressed her.
That's inappropriate.
Well, I don't know how it's any different when he did attack us.
That was during public comment.
Okay, I have a statement, Gator.
Please read your statement.
I, I'm going to, David. And it's long, so just hold on.
I'm holding.
Four years ago, when I decided to run for a seat on the school board, it was not because I wanted to be a politician. I ran because I did not want to end my thirty-seven-year career of working with students in Putnam County. I wanted, I wanted to be able to continue to work for our community, uh, community in a positive way. I wanted to help make Putnam County a better place to live, work, and educate our children. And I knew there would be tough decisions to make. The recent wave of violence and death that has struck American schools around the nation has forced small counties like Putnam to react to the dangers that we have grown too accustomed, grown accustomed to ignoring due to our community's size. This reaction has shown the strength of our local government, our citizens, and our action committees to protect our schools. While almost every state and county in our great nation has debated the best way to tackle this problem, my job as your elected school board member is to determine the facts, the resources, the options, the dangers and comparisons to our school system in order to solve this most important of issues. Different school boards are reacting differently depending on their location, the amount of funding, and their own perspect, respective dangers. However, there is one constant to all of this debate and policy change. Everyone is taking this decision seriously, and they are following the appropriate process to make the best decisions. I believe the appropriate process to make the best decisions has not been followed in Putnam County. I knew the board members would not always agree with the superintendent or each other. I knew that I would hear suggestions, complaints, and at times praise for decisions that we made. I knew that I needed to form a thick skin for the times when I and/or board, the board made an unpopular decision. I accepted this position with humility and gratitude to serve and protect our children and vowed to always do what is best, as I have for over forty years. And that is what I have been doing regarding school safety. But the Guardian program has been acting without authorization from the school board at the action of the superintendent of schools. When I voted against the Guardian program several weeks ago, it was mainly for two reasons. First, I felt that we needed more time to make a sound decision, and we had the time. And second, I felt like we had not fully explored all the options that may be available to us. I didn't want to make a decision about school safety without looking at all the pros and cons and without weighing all the options as hundreds of school boards are currently doing around the nation. I felt like we needed, needed to make sure all of our bases were covered, and I had hoped that the task force would take the time to make sure they were covered before a recommendation was made, which the school board, which is what the school board is designed to do for all of our citizens. Of all the decisions I've had to make as a school board member thus far, this decision is one that I felt warranted, the most thorough decision-making process, where we weighed every option in hopes that we would make the best and safest possible decision. That is my job. That is why I was elected. I was not elected to rubber stamp every recommendation that comes before me depending on politics. I do have my own opinions about the Guardian program, both positive and negative. I feel at this time, unfortunately, it is pointless to discuss them, because the decision has already been made. Guardians have been vetted, selected, and their training has begun. I want to make it very clear with this statement that I do not ever want to do business like this again. No elected official should be made to feel like they have no choice but, but to vote a certain way. No elected official should be made to feel that a decision is a done deal before it is voted on. Above all, I want our children safe, and I want all of our parents to trust that the safety of their children, who they send to us for a hundred-and-eighty days a year, is of the utmost importance to this board. It is also my prayer that one of our guardians or our SROs never finds himself or herself in a situation where the weapon he or she carries will be needed. And to me, that's the ultimate success of any program for school safety that we choose to implement. It will continue to be part of my daily prayers. We need to make a decision as soon as possible so that whatever plan we choose is in place on the first day of school. I will be leaving the state on June twentieth for six weeks. I want a decision to be made as chairman before I leave the state of Florida.
Well, Madam Chair, I'll, I'll make a motion. I'm, I move that we accept the committee's recommendation.
Excuse me, I thought Jorgensen had the-
Under Robert's Rules of Order, I, I make a motion. Somebody seconds it, and then you could have some discussion, and then a vote will come, up or down. I would suggest, based on what I've seen, what I've heard, the lack of being able to come out with, you know, somebody says this police department's gonna get with us and that police department's gonna get with us, and I call a county four-hundred miles from here and they're doing this and they're doing that, you know, we are, we are us and we have to make a decision and we've got to move on. We've got other stuff to plan for that this, this is, we've had armed people in our schools for decades. This is not the biggest thing in the world. So I would like to make a recommendation that we approve the Guardian program as presented and recommended by our school board. And if you don't like this, just vote it down and go on and make another.
I thought we already voted on this. Can we vote on it again?
I just pulled it, but I put it back on the table just then.
Where is the, um, the motion specifically?
The motion is to come back with the recommendation from the-
Task force.
Task force.
We already voted on that.
I had pulled it off the table so we could discuss it.
That's not what you pulled off the table, though.
What, I was not at the meeting, so what did he pull off the table? I thought that's what he pulled off.
I've got a board attorney down there to tell me.
Selection of safe school allocation option. Safe school allocation option.
We already voted down the task force four one, remember? That's what he was saying.
But now he's bringing it back.
I brought it back.
Because you weren't here, he wanted you to be in on this.
So we tabled, y'all tabled it.
Right, so it's coming up now, and it's an allocation for a safe schools director. Is that correct, Mr. Superintendent?
That wasn't what I was doing, but it's, it's okay.
No, no.
No, it says, "Discussion input and action selection of safe school allocation option per SB seventy-twenty-six." That's the, how it's written in the agenda.
And that's L one.
And that's what he's made a motion to do, correct?
Selection of safe, safe school?
No, L two.
Oh, L two. Discussion on safe school allocation. Safe school allocation. That's an allocation of a person, no?
Allocation of funding, how to use the funding, which allocation.
I was looking at how to use this.
The overall allocation.
My motion was to go with the original proposal of the committee, and if you don't like it, you don't have to vote for it.
Right, because-
But we, I don't know if we could do that again since it says a four one vote.
My recollection is that, um-
No, y'all removed it from the table.
No, no, this was in a previous meeting.
In a, in a previous meeting, option six was recommended and the board voted no on option six.
Right, right.
And then in every subsequent meeting thereafter, Senate Bill seventy, the options in seventy-twenty-six were discussed, um, and no vote was taken.
Okay.
And last meeting, it was put on the table and brought back today. Um, so, um-
So does David need to make his motion in a different manner?
I just made my motion.
I know, I'm just trying to get it cleared up so we can get a-
It's about money. What money are you talking about, David?
Okay, I have here what I believe is-
Money to fund the, the program that it was recommended by the Guardian, uh, the committee. I, you know, you've gotten to the point, it's kind of, it, it is sad that you, we got one person dealing individually with police departments, you've got one person dealing individually with superintendents across the state. I, I, I-
Do my job.
I'm, you'd have, we do have a job, Kathy. It is serious to me, and it is serious to you. But let's make a recommendation and make a motion and move on.
Would you consider trying to even advertise this job, since you've done such a great job when you did the district police and trying that?
I don't, the district police will come in handy for that type of thing if that's what you guys voted in for.
Is it something we would at least vote? That's our job.
I'm, I'm partial to the Guardian program, because I know the people that are putting their lives on the line, or, or some people that have indicated to me that they're gonna die if they have to save our kids.
Right, and I understand, but that's still not their number one job. They're not protecting the hardness of the school. They're not-
It's form over substance.
Well, no, no.
The substance of this is to comply with the law and protect our children and employees. Just make, somebody make a motion.
Well, I, I wanna say something real quick. Could not we do this Guardian program? David even said earlier that he thought probably the governor was gonna come off some more money, and at which point we had enough money to put SROs in every school.
That would be ideal.
Couldn't we do that?
No, because the money, all of our seven-hundred-and-seventy-five would be two supervisors and nine, the, the proposal would eat up all the money.
I know, but if we got more money?
I don't know, I, that's, I feel that he's gonna be under pressure in his race with Bill Nelson, but I don't know that that's going to happen. And this thing is going to continue to change whatever we vote in. It's gonna continue to change.
Why can't we try?
I wanna remind you about the SRO contract. We need to make sure that we make a motion. If we're gonna go with the SRO contract, these people need to know so they can budget for that. That's gotta be-
But is that part of this motion that David just made?
We need a thirty-day, we can have a renegotiation of the contract. There's definitely a thirty-day window. Yeah, to where we can renegotiate that.
I made a motion to accept the recommendation of the security committee, the program that I originally made the motion for. And, and you either need to, you know-
Is that the motion?
That's the motion, we need to yea or nay it, and then you need to come up with something else to, so we can comply with state law by the time school starts and these people can start preparing for the kids showing up. It's, we don't have long.
Is there a second to David's motion?
Second.
David, there is no deadline whatsoever mentioned in the statute.
Well-
None. Excuse me? So-
Except for when it was signed into law.
And what, and what, was there a date, Gator, or just by the time school starts? Because that's different.
No, he says the date was signed into law.
Oh.
The law became effective the day the governor placed it.
So we're breaking the law or the statute.
Okay, so, but I meant the date that the plan had to be-
There is none. It went into effect the day it was signed into law. That means we should have been complying then.
We have a motion and a second on the floor. Has everybody, Madam Chair, had a chance to discuss?
All right, and this is what we're gonna do, discuss.
And what the, what the motion, just so I'm clear, is we're voting on the task force recommendation.
That's correct.
Okay.
And that's allowed to be brought back up? I don't think so either.
My understanding was that the, when it originally came to the board, it was for an allocation of jobs or for funding.
We're a self-judiciating body. We can violate our own policies if we so choose at any time, and you can bring it back.
You can break the law, too.
No, that's not the law. That's...the school board policy is a lot different. That's why we're able to...
So you're saying we can never vote on that again?
I think the legislature expects a decision on how to...how Putnam County School Board chooses the three options that you have. And that decision has to be made at some point in time. There is not a date specific, but I think the legislature expects that the board make a decision and the board should not be constrained by prior discussions in trying to reach a final decision. I think this is a very unique circumstance where although Options 6 have been debated, that it should not be precluded from coming back to the board in light of a law that requires the board to make a decision on which combination to use.
At some point, the superintendent may not be able to field enough people and come back and say, "Listen, folks, I'm going to roll some staff and into teaching positions and we're going to hire SROs. This thing is going to change, but we need to comply with the law and move on." And I know in your hearts, you don't mean bad by your proposal. That's a very good proposal, but it is cost...a little cost prohibitive, I mean, to hire these folks, but I just think we need to go ahead and vote this up or down and move on. And if you don't like this one, come up with the other one and try it and if it doesn't work out, at least you're down the road with the training.
Call the question and then I have a motion.
All right.
Question?
I call for a question.
Oh, I can't do that.
That means we'll call him for a vote.
Right. All in favor?
Aye.
Very reluctantly, aye. Opposed?
Aye.
Aye.
Motion carries. Okay.
I'm so glad that's over and I voted no. You too. You voted yes, honey.
I know, but make that $1,000.
So everyone's leaving before the meeting's over. Wow.
Yeah, call Renanny. I had a couple of words to say to him. And Gator, you don't run on meetings either.
Okay.
Clarification.
We have discussion, yes, input and action on our budget amendments for April of 2018.
Madam Chair, can I interrupt just a minute? I want to make clarification. As far as I say schools allocation, as part of the motion, that includes the original SRO contract plus the additional safe schools allocation, which is part of that recommendation.
From the task...
We don't have the sheriffs.
What David did in my notes from last time.
It was in that, wasn't it in that proposal?
To go with the task force recommendation, which was Option 6. And this, I'm just saying what I understand. By no means says I have to be right, but to stay with the current contract we have within, which is eight resource officers and one supervisor, to go with the new proposal for an additional three SROs and one supervisor and to implement the Guardian program. That was Option 6. That was what was tabled, I think, but I've got worlds of documents here, so I have to go back and go through it all.
I want to make sure it's clear.
In my notes is what was tabled, but I don't know if that's what David...
That's what I was...that was my intent. I didn't word it very well, but I would like to urge the superintendent, knowing the feelings that the board has had over this, to, if at some point in the future we evolve this program, to look at some of their ideas as very plausible to...
Well, and part of that recommendation too, if you recall, or the recommendation from the task force, if we received any additional safe school funding in addition to what the 750,000, we could explore hiring additional officers and so on and so forth. So, is that answer...I want to make sure, is that the recommendation as you understand it, Chair?
I can't, and I don't like to speak, but I can wipe it out.
The Guardian program plus this position that goes with a supervisor, is that what it was called?
You don't even know what you called it on.
Yes, I do.
The recommendation from the task force was remain with our...remain with our current contract, add the four additional SROs with the additional safe schools money, and then implement the Guardian program.
Yes, because they recommended Option 6 and Charlie gets Option 6 in front of him and I have Option 6 also, and that's what Option 6 was, to have SROs in 11 schools and two supervisors and have Guardian volunteers.
Is that...Chair, if any questions?
I know this is unorthodox, but may I approach an issue so we can verify this matter?
Yes, sir.
If you can't remember all that, we'll get Joe to come up here. I know he can get it done.
And I'm just a member of the audience. I can't tell you what my understanding is. It's not, you know...
Madam Chair, I just want to make sure that I'm clear about the motion that was approved. The motion that was approved was to approve the Guardian program and also the school resource contract, which includes a hiring of three additional youth resource deputies and the two supervisors that we currently fund.
You're going to have to ask Mr. Buck because he made the motion.
Yes.
That's not what he said, but I think...
That's how it came out until Charlie helped me.
That was Option 6, as I understand it, which increases our level of...
They don't even know what they're talking about.
Sheriff, I have the recommendation.
I do know what I voted on.
Whenever, Madam Chair, whenever you would like me to read it, I can read it after the sheriff.
Was there anything else, Gator?
No, that was all. I just wanted some clarification.
I'm trying to squeeze another few hundred thousand dollars out of you guys. That's a joke, folks. That's a joke.
I'm going to read the recommendation from Mr. Perry, the chair of the Task Force Committee. Says, "In my capacity as the chair of the Safe School Task Force, respectfully submit the consideration of the Putnam County School District of the following. Upon a vote taken on the motion made during the meeting of the Safe School Task Force on April 24, 2018, it is a recommendation of the Safe School Task Force that the Putnam County School Board adopt and implement Option 6, which is school resource officer for middle and high, add chair's proposal for three additional SROs, and Guardian volunteers where needed, with the caveat that if the school board members can find additional monies, then they can take it to whatever additional levels that they can afford and that Guardian volunteers be utilized not only at seven schools but at any appropriate amount."
What do you mean at any appropriate amount? What does that mean?
So you're okay with them being in...
Using them at any additional schools where needed.
So we could put like 10 guns at Blackah High. We could.
Mrs. Jorgensen, respectfully, that is never our intent here.
Back when they had...
Training 25 when we need training.
I made it very clear that those 25 that we're training also include charter school employees.
Okay, so 20, 30, 22.
I don't know how many Guardian school employees there are.
We're talking about the motion. Let's...
Madam Chair, you have the gavel. Would you please take order here?
Well, both of y'all are acting a little inappropriate. We're trying to clarify the motion. Right, I know. That's what I'm saying. We were trying to clarify the motion. The superintendent read what the original motion was and that's what David said...
He intended.
He intended in his motion. I don't know how else to say it.
Ms. Gilliard, is that what you intended on your second?
Yes. And that's what you intended to vote for.
And Ms. Crawford, your affirmative vote, that's what you intended?
Yes, reluctantly.
And are we going to put any limits or can they put as many?
Do it now. You have to do it in the motion now. That's what I'm saying.
Rifle squads in the high schools.
Needs to be...
I don't...
The school board needs to readdress the...
I don't think they intend to arm every available person.
25 to 30 people in the training.
I know, but we...how many schools do we have?
Supposed to be seven.
No, we have, um, total schools. There could be one armed guardian in each school, correct?
Yes, I know.
I mean, I'm just using that for a...
But plus a SRO.
So that's two people in a school. I'm just saying, at a school the size of Palackah High School, that would be two, only two people.
What if you had evidence that something was going to occur to school and you had to flood it with people?
Law enforcement, call 911.
Yes, there you go. So anyway, I appreciate...
If I'm hearing and understanding correctly, what is said here that we just voted on does not state that we have to stop exploring other things, other options. So what you mentioned, no, no, if you listen at what he just read, that our chairperson, Mr. Perry, stated, it stated that we would implement the Guardian program and down the road, should these monies come, as David has mentioned, we have the opportunity at that point to look at paying for resource officers to be in all of our schools. As it stands now, we do not have that luxury because we don't have the money. So what I'm hearing is, Nikki, you're not stifled in, you know, having the meeting, the other things that you've been looking at and exploring. That's a great thing. You know, you're looking for...
But it eats up the complete...the motion you made takes entire, every dime we have. So there's no money on the table to renegotiate with these other companies that have offered to do some of these.
Well, if we make a sit, mostly.
So that's my point is there is, if you are attaching the money, which that's, I think what you...that takes all the other options off the table.
There are no...you've made the choice and there are...
And Gator, I don't know if you're the one to ask.
I was thinking of additional monies, not this that we have on hand right now, but I'm saying the governors will see that the monies that they have allocated to these districts is not enough. That's what I'm...
Right. Superintendent, I want to say something.
Go ahead, I'm sorry.
Rick, is this something that we will look at every year?
Certainly.
We could.
I mean, like this time next year, we'll see what our funding is and...
As what the legislature says.
If the legislature has changed, we would have to readdress.
If I may, Mrs. Chair, I think I've made it clear during this entire deliberation over the last several months that my intention is to have a youth resource deputy on every school campus. Unfortunately, we've came to the realization that we don't have the fiscal means to make that happen. And if that means that in the next few years, we can move towards that direction and if it's the will of the board gradually phase out the Guardian program, I'm certainly okay with that. What I don't want is for us to get caught at the 11th hour with no ability to protect our schools, to protect our children, and to comply with the requirements of Senate Bill 7026.
And I would ask that Charlie, because of the auditor general and the type of, we might get audited on, when you bring a motion back up like this, I really don't feel secure that that's the correct way to handle it. So if you can make a report.
When the Option 6 was originally discussed, it was voted down for the purpose of having additional time to consider all options. Not that Option 6 was going to be completely off the table and outside of the board's ability to come back and readdress it later after the workshops and additional board meetings. So that's why I feel comfortable that it is permitted by law and by Robert's Rules of Order to be voted on in this manner at this meeting.
Okay.
And I guess it's just a matter of opinion as to whether we've researched all options or not.
Yeah, that's...I mean, there's still three other things we are waiting. So there, the time constraint, I've never done a motion with the basis of because of a time constraint or because we want. I don't, I'm just concerned...
Imaginary time constraint.
That was what I was concerned about. The auditor general does give us those things.
So are we...
So for example, if the board felt like it needed additional time today and did not want to vote on this matter today, they could still vote down the motion on Option 6 to provide additional time in the future to consider. But that would not take off the table every option for the board to consider in the combination that is allowed for by the Senate Bill.
The problem is that the motion that just passed ties us into, and I'm not saying we shouldn't have, but ties us into two more resource officers and another supervisor per year. So that eats up all our money, so in effect...
Well, in all fairness, when a vote is made and cast, somebody, if somebody votes yea and somebody votes nay, the die is cast and it either passes or it doesn't pass and you move on. I think we're going into so much time now that we should have probably closed up on other comments and things instead of...if you've got concerns, we need to bring them back up and we'll continue to make...
You know, David, we don't go behind the scenes and talks with these guys. We only talk to each other this year. Seriously.
Yeah.
Well, I was just concerned about the auditor general. When you, when we've had this in the past and there's been specific things you vote on and then you vote them down and you bring the same thing up at another meeting. I was always told legally there was some type of opposition to that.
I've never been told that, but you know, if somebody calls and that's, that's here or there, I would really be shocked if somebody called.
Oh, yeah.
Really.
Okay, let's...
Madam Chair, if I may, I just have one additional call. I want to make, respectfully, Mrs. Jorgensen, what the proposal was, was to hire three additional youth resource deputies, with us bearing the cost of the supervisors. So that's actually what brings the cost sharing into a more equitable share for the board with us bearing 42% of the responsibility or $581,000 and the board bearing the additional 51% or $750,747, if my memory serves me correctly.
I understand you were very fair with us financially. I understand that you needed to know if we were going to accept your contract by July 1st, and I intended to bring that up as its own issue, not knowing that he was going to bring the whole ball of wax up again. I was going to make a motion that we go with or don't go with, but that we let you know one way or the other so you know what's going on, because I understood that.
Certainly.
Now, it's been done for you. My problem with this, and I know it's voted and done, but we have no limit of the number of Guardians we're going to have. The intention is not just to have a Guardian at each school. We don't have resource. That's not the intention. I think the public needs to know that too, because I don't think they are aware of that, that we are just going, there's no limit. I'm not saying we're going to do hundreds of people, but there is no limit on how many guns we're going to have in each school.
Well, and respectfully, I would submit to you that if there's an incident on a campus, there's no limit to the amount of deputy sheriffs that I would deploy there to ensure that our students are safe.
For your law enforcement or education, that's my thing.
Well, and I would also submit to you that based on the curriculum that we have put together for these Guardians, they will be better equipped to handle an active shooter more so than the average recruit who graduates from St. John's River State's Law Enforcement Academy or any other academy in the state or in the United States for that matter. Our intent is not to flood our schools with Guardians. It's to ensure that we're in compliance with the law and to make sure that our students are safe.
How many guns will it take? I'm just asking, because you're going to make that decision. Obviously, one man is going to make that decision, how many guns we need in Palackah High for Palackah High to be safe.
That's supposed to be confidential.
That's confidential. That's not really something I'd prefer to get into at a public meeting.
Now that this has been done, I'm examing for an executive session. I'd like to see the list of people now, now that it's been voted on. I have questions that are obviously...
We can do that in private.
Now we can do it. Now I'd like to call an executive session at your convenience, Mr. Superintendent, so that we can ask these confidential questions.
We can do that at the next board meeting.
Could we do, I was going to say I'd like for it to be done before I have to leave, so the next board meeting would...
Yeah, and unless somebody vehemently opposed, I'd like to meet these cowboys.
He has the curriculum. He's going to share what this is.
Sheriff, if you'll be able to come to our next board meeting, June 19th?
I'll check my calendar, but I'll make sure that we have representation here if I'm not available.
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, discussion, our new business is input and discussion, input and action on our budget amendments for April.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? You didn't even have to take a step, did you? Motion carries.
Madam Chair, could you repeat your move?
I moved and Nikki seconded.
Board reports, Ms. Gilliard?
You started with me before.
I pass.
I pass.
Graduation.
Okay, Ms. Gilliard's got a board report.
That's okay then.
Are you sure?
I just wanted to mention the...
About how wonderful all the graduation ceremonies were.
Without incident, the students were well behaved.